Good morning. It's 8:30, and I'm calling the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 4th to order. First item we have is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Next, we have employee recognition we want to start off with.
Want to vote on the agenda? We've got, you got the motion. And the second, just vote.
All in favor of approving the, approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Not enough coffee yet. And Dale Arnold is with her. Karen has been with us for 25 years on the probation department. Dale's our new boss out there.
Thank you. Goes without saying that employees are becoming harder and harder to keep these days. On average, the average employee in 2022 holds a job for about 3.8 to 4.1 years. Less than 8% of employees will ever hold a job longer than 25 years for the same organization. That means 92% will quit and move on. This makes Karen an outlier. Not only are we lucky to have someone who has worked for the county this long, but we are lucky to have someone who performs to the standards that Karen does. Karen is that go-to person and a fantastic resource for staff as she guides and supports others in the office. Among many of her duties that she's responsible for, she's responsible for managing data entry and ensuring that we're working within our budget. So in other words, she keeps me on my toes. I've not been in this role very long, but in my short time, it has been easy for me to determine the significant impact Karen has had on our agency. She's adaptable, precise, and very skilled. And we are very lucky to have her working for us as long as she has, and we're looking forward to another 25 years. Thank you.
Next, we have approval of bills and vouchers.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And then approval of the minutes from May 21st, 2024.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. And next was citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens present who want to speak on anything not on today's agenda? Dave, do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Next request, we have Sheriff, and, or no, we have Gabe Tweetin. Sheriff is here. Got his back.
Where else to report?
Gabe's here. Request approval of Resolution 2024-18 to support Minnesota Emergency Communication Network grant application. Gabe?
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, as you can see before you, there's a, a grant opportunity to ECN for us to upgrade some of our ARMOUR radio equipment. This grant is a statewide grant with a 5% match on our behalf. Do you have any questions regarding the, the resolution or the grant application, which is due, I believe, June 28th?
Any questions for Gabe? I'm on the Northwest Emergency Communication Board, and funding is, is a vital part of keeping our communication networks up and running. And this will help us keep it, I think it's limited to radios in squads and portable radios?
It's limited to radios and equipment to support radio operations, so like programming equipment to program the radios. So didn't necessarily apply to our PSAP. I did meet with Brian Zastopol, the Systems Administrator, and the spirit of the grant, I guess, isn't for, for PSAP equipment or programming.
Hopefully, we'll find something on that along the way. Okay. Any, I'm sorry.
I'll offer a motion to approve Resolution 2024-18.
Second.
You have motion to second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Do we sell the old radios then at all?
So we can. There is, there is a market for some of them. The ones right now that these would be replacing, I think, for, at least for the time being, I would look at keeping those as spare portable radios. They still work on the network. They've, they've been sunsetted, so Motorola no longer supports them, but they still work, and for the foreseeable future, they'll still work. So if we have a big event or something, it's nice to have some additional radios.
Okay. What is the warranty, three years or five?
Excuse me?
The warranty time that Motorola?
Um, yeah, the warranty is through Motorola Solutions, is generally a year on the radio itself, and then they go a little bit longer on some of the, the programming, the stuff in it. But we pay a contract annually with Motorola for, for service of them, but at some point, they just stop supporting the technology of certain, certain radios.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, we have motion to second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thanks, Gabe.
All right. I'm here for number two.
Oh. Request approval of a mutual aid agreement.
So this is a mutual aid agreement that we've actually, was originally signed in 2011 with Otter Tail County, basically for us to support them or them to support us in the event of a disaster or emergency where our manpower, equipment, and stuff is, is running short. So it's a pretty standard mutual agreed, mutual agreement, mutual aid agreement that just covers the basis of reimbursement and then also liability as far as insurance and things like that. So again, this was previously approved back in 2011. We're just looking to refresh it. The sheriff did review it and approved it. Then I also had Mike Leeser from the County Attorney's Office go over the verbiage and didn't see any issues with it.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Let's see. Motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thanks again, Gabe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sheriff, do you have something on here now? Okay. I'll wait till after you're done, then I have a comment. I thought you were getting up to leave.
Sheriff is here to request approval to use public safety funds for deputy sheriff hiring bonuses.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here today. I am going to defer this over to the chief deputy, as he has done the, the background on this, and he's already presented this twice. I would just note that this has been presented to PIC and the Public Safety Committees and supported to move forward to the full board.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, like the sheriff said, we have presented this already to PIC and the Public Safety Board. What we're requesting today is that we get assistance in hiring and retaining some of the deputies that we currently have and are expected to hire throughout the rest of this year. Locally, there are several agencies that are doing some type of a hiring bonus or have changed their hiring practices to bring on additional officers or deputies. I point out that Fargo PD has implemented a new program where they no longer are offering just an academy and have individuals pay to go to their academy. They're now bringing those new officers onboard and paying for them at their Step 1 Police Officer grade to have them go through their training academy, and then they move into their, their full-time position right after the academy. In addition to that, last year, North Dakota Legislature gave out a Back the Blue Grant to local agencies, and Fargo used that money to help retain the officers that, that they have. The statewide, I think they had 3.5 million that they gave out to each of the agencies and divvied it up between the 100 agencies that they have in North Dakota. For Cass County, I spoke with the sheriff over there. He said that they're currently doing a $1,000 hiring bonus for, for new deputies. And then Moorhead PD is offering a $2,000 hiring bonus to new officers without experience and a $4,000 hiring bonus to officers that are coming over laterally or that have experience to join the department there. And then State Patrol offered a $5,000 hiring bonus, the first that I know of for them to be offering hiring bonus for lateral officers to come into the current academy that they have set up. So they started that hiring process last year with it.
Got a question on that.
Yeah.
Since they've been giving these hiring bonuses, do they still have vacancies?
The State Patrol, Fargo, Moorhead PD, all still have vacancies, yes.
And more, the Mortar City of Moorhead, they have vacancies too yet?
Unfortunately, they've, they've been hit maybe the hardest out of all those agencies that have been mentioned. I believe they have around 14 openings currently, which would be about 25% of their department.
The hiring bonuses there are not producing any additional ones, or?
I know they just hired two that started yesterday. I'm not sure. I'd have to meet with their admin to talk about specifics with their hiring bonus.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Could you give me a little, a couple examples on the lateral moves? What does that look like? I mean, is that jurisdiction, jurisdiction, or?
Sure. That would be, when we, when we refer to lateral hires, that, those are officers that have experience within departments. It could be a officer from, from Moorhead PD coming to Clay County. It could be a deputy from another agency coming over to Clay County. Last year, earlier this year, we, or it was last year, we set up a grid that, so it defines if somebody has a certain amount of years of service on, at an agency, they're eligible to move into a certain step with our agency. Relevant on the experience that they have. If they're coming from a smaller agency, their three years of service may not be equivalent to someone that's coming from Fargo PD, West Fargo, or Moorhead PD to our agency. So they may not be given credit for all their years of service because of the, the size of agency and workload that they're used to.
Oh, it's more about the, the background and the experience rather than description itself?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'm going to tie what I was going to mention earlier into, into this, because I think they can kind of relate. And I'm going to start off by saying, I, my sympathies go out to law enforcement, again, for what happened this last week with another tragedy in Minnesota, with another senseless killing of one of our law enforcement officers. You know, I, I think there's, I've seen on social media, there's been a number of sheriffs and, uh, police chiefs have been just calling for support on behalf of, of law enforcement. And here in Clay County, we're fortunate that our citizens back law enforcement, your county board backs law enforcement, and, you know, I think from, I think it's safe to say we will continue to do so. When it comes to what you're proposing today, one, another way where we can potentially see risk to our law enforcement is having shortage of staff. If you can't have the appropriate number of people to cover areas and so on and so forth, you can, that just can create more risk to those that are, are on patrol, for example. So, you know, public safety, we talked about this. I understand PIC talked about this. Public safety certainly agrees with your recommendation, and I, I think it's only appropriate that we try to do everything we can to keep your department fully staffed, to help the overall public safety in Clay County. So, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to publicly, and even publicly, ask our citizens to put support behind the work that all of you do, whether, you know, we always talk about Back the Blue, but it's really Back the Blue and Black, and Back to Brown. So, and, and even Highway Patrol can be in some instances where they're in harm's way as well, so.
Well, it's definitely thank you for that. And, you know, I was just out at breakfast on the farm this past weekend, and it's one thing that we do get when we're out there from our, our community. We do get a lot of thank you for your service, and we appreciate what you do, and we support you, and that's, that's a very, very comforting to hear. We do have a very supportive community here in Clay County, and we don't want to lose that. We want that to continue. And I do thank the board for their continued support of the sheriff's office. I've been very fortunate with the working relationship I have with the board and our county administrator and county attorney. That doesn't happen across the entire state of Minnesota. This is probably a little bit of an anomaly that we do get along so well and that we are able to work together. So I do thank you for that as well.
With that, Mr. Chair, I would, I would move approval of the request for the public safety funds to be used for deputy sheriff hiring bonuses.
We do have an additional request in this as well. If you recall...
Oh, yes. And then there was, was there, how many were there?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Yeah. And then my motion would all include then that the, the three that were previously hired for 15, they, they only got half of a stipend, right?
Yep.
And so the, so what you had requested was they receive that second half.
The second half.
And I would include that within my motion.
Okay. And a second. Further comments? I want to jump in, just Commissioner Campbell covered it beautifully, but this is, after 40-year law enforcement career, 12 of it here as Chief of Moorhead, you guys are exactly right. I lived, I policed in my hometown for 28 years and loved the job and loved the people that I protected. But I came here and I learned the cooperation of the agencies share with each other. It's not necessarily the fact in a lot of communities across this country. And the support that we have here from the public is phenomenal. It's, and I think it is, it's, it's exceptional. It is not the common support, even in communities where officers feel they're supported. Here, they're, they're genuinely, genuinely respected, and their needs are generally met. But right now, we are not getting people stepping up to fill the ranks the way we need them. And bonuses are important. The bonuses that other, other communities, they're in the same straits as we are, you know, some of them are upwards of $10,000. And the problem is, you're going to work in a department where you're in any of it because, just simply from the danger and the, the issues are going on. It's still dangerous here, but it's a place that, it's a community where you can take your time and do, do your job right. And that's important. I think we realize that here with Sheriff's Department. I hope Moorhead can fill their ranks to where they, they, they can overcome some of the issues that are facing them. But we've got to be aware, and I want to make the message to the public, it's a good career. And I know you hear about it when, when an officer falls, you hear about it when an officer makes a mistake, and those are things that come with this job, and you train people around it, try to minimize that. I did 40 years of it, and I don't regret a minute of it. And I know you two gentlemen well enough to, to know that you feel the same way. And I hope anybody out there listening who has a desire to be a law enforcement officer will approach here in your, in your own community. Come here, find out where the opportunities are, find out what you need to do, and it's a good job. And the incentives are just a very minor side benefit. When you get to the end of a career here, I know very few people from our region who don't leave with their head up and feeling good about how they spent their time. Having said that, are there any other comments? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Stay safe. Okay. Justin Soremar, County Engineer, requests approval to hire administrative assistant for the Highway Department.
Yes, good morning. So I am requesting approval to hire an administrative assistant. So last week, our administrative assistant of the past five years put a notice in, and her last day of working will be June 14th, so I'm requesting to fill that position. And then I did hand out a budget sheet, too.
Any questions? No, I'm, I know. Maybe.
I, I'm just, I'm just curious, so we do exit interviews, right?
Yes.
You don't have to share with today, but I'm, I'm just, I'm curious as to why the individual was leaving.
Um, so I don't, I guess I could share with you after. It's nothing bad.
Okay. I didn't, I, you know, I like to know if it's, it's just good for us to, to...
Better, yeah, I guess I can say a better opportunity.
There you go. Okay. That's what I'm...
Any other?
I would, I would maybe say different opportunity.
Okay.
Can't get better than Clay County.
That's true.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
I move for a motion to approve the hiring of an administrative assistant.
Second.
Have motion to second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. And then I did just want to mention with all the rain we've gotten over the past month, we've had a couple roads go under, so just advising people to travel safely. And the roads that have gone under, we've had flaggers out there directing traffic through with plenty of signage, and hopefully the rain stops here soon.
Have you had any washouts yet?
Yes. We spent most of the day yesterday fixing a washout east of Barnesville.
Okay.
But it's been very, like the storm on Sunday night, there was some places that got an inch and a half and some places that got over four, so it was...
Wow.
Hmm. We appreciate you guys getting out there and hustling to keep our roads safe.
Thank you.
Let them know we thank them.
Yep, will do.
Okay, next up.
I wonder if we should wait for this one. It's posted at aye.
Yeah.
Even though it's not public hearing, I just think there, in case there's public interest, we should probably...
Okay, well... Let's see, we got a...
Maybe we could take a five-minute...
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. We have Erica Frank and Mike Leeser, Erica from Planning and Zoning, and Mike from Assistant County Attorney. And this is request approval to enact Cannabis Zoning Ordinance 2024-2. Y'all, oh, and Cory Bang. You didn't make, you didn't make the lineup, but you're with us, Cory. Okay, take it away, folks.
Mr. Chair, I believe it has to be removed from the table, and so you have to have the same person that made the motion to put it on the table and take it off.
Correct. This was tabled, you're right.
I believe that was me, wasn't it?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I would move that we take that off the table for a discussion on the cannabis ordinance.
Do we have a second on the motion?
We had the second last week.
While she's looking it up, just for future, I wonder as long as it's somebody who voted in favor of tabling, I thought, could, could do it, but...
I think it was unanimous.
Francis.
Okay. Have motion to second. All in favor of taking the cannabis ordinance off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Just in the record, it was Commissioner Campbell with the motion and Commissioner Gross with the second. Okay. Take it away, folks. We're, we've met Robert's rules.
So I'm back today with the Cannabis Zoning Ordinance, with the proposed to be incorporated into the Clay County Development Code. Since we're all kind of, and we're acquainted with most of this, I'm just going to jump to the things that we had some questions and concerns about last week. So a little background is the retail sales of cannabis is set to begin in 2025, and then the bill that was likely to be signed or is, has been signed for that law amending that cannabis legislation that was passed in 2023 would allow for that granting of licenses prior to 2025, kind of with that July 1st arbitrary deadline for licenses to be issued by the state. And I'll just jump ahead to the tax classification, since that's where we had some questions and concerns last, on May 28th, when we had a public hearing. I did touch base with Jill Murray, the county assessor, for some clarification, and her memo that she provided is included in the packet. And so I'll just kind of read a portion of that out for you today. The Department of, Property Tax Division of the Department of Revenue is the responsible for overseeing the administration of the property tax system. They, the division gives the necessary direction to the assessors to, as their, to their duties under the laws of the state. So as assessors observed that growing interest and development of real estate parcels for cannabis, assessors requested an opinion of the DOR on classification for cultivation of cannabis. Minnesota Statute, Section 273.13, Subdivision 23, provides a number of requirements that must be met in order to be classed as that Class 2A agricultural land. It was determined that cannabis was not included in the term agricultural products in the Minnesota statute. And then therefore, this assessment portion for classification was brought forward in 2023 Minnesota Legislature and resulted in the following changes, as it would be classed as commercial 3A property. Regardless of the location or the zoning on the property, the cultivation, manufacturing, wholesale, and retail of cannabis will follow those, that Minnesota state tax classification. So the biggest division across for our code update is whether or not to classify cultivation as kind of more agriculturally in our zoning and allow it in more zoning, zoning districts than the manufacturing, wholesale, retail. That's up to kind of debate. I mean, it was a 50/50 split when the Planning Commission heard it, and it seemed kind of like it was 50/50 split for the board as well. Whether or not you want to consider it as an industrial use and limit it to highway commercial, limited highway commercial zoning districts, or allow it in a more general broad base. I did create a map, and anything that's shown in green here would be how the current proposed zoning, the current proposed ordinance would allow for cultivation to occur in any of that green area. The white is zoning districts where it would not be permitted.
And Erica, briefly, regardless of how it's classified, you still will only be allowed X amount of facilities based on population, correct?
That, the X amount of facilities by population is only for retail.
Retail, okay.
So that limit does not apply to cultivation, manufacturing, or wholesale.
And this doesn't limit the ability for an applicant to request a rezone on parcels, correct?
That is correct. Yep. An applicant can certainly come in, plat, replat a property, and request to rezone a property to that highway commercial or limited highway commercial. That order would be, they'd have to go to the Planning Commission first. The Planning Commission would make a recommendation to the county board, and then the county board would also hear that rezoning request and platting request as well. And then it would still go back to the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit for that cannabis use on the property.
Excuse me? Thank you. Thank you for that information. I think that kind of answers my questions, whether it be industrial versus agricultural. And I, and I think the, the important notice there is that the state has defined it as not agriculture for tax purposes. And, you know, so it, it seems to me the industrial slash highway commercial use is probably the most in line so that you don't create conflict with how the assessors are supposed to tax it. I, does that, am I correct in that assumption? I, does that, am I correct in that assumption? Maybe Mike, are you, what do you think on that?
I think it's true, and, but the board certainly has the authority and the option here to, to make that conflict. It wouldn't be, one would not make the other illegal or outside the law, but they would be in less harmony.
But as, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned, if we, if we were to establish this as, as used in industrial areas only, according to our ordinance, that does not mean that somebody down the road who might be an agricultural producer and wanted to have 40 acres or whatever, they, they could certainly still come before the Planning Commission and request that rezoning. Is that correct?
That is correct, they certainly can come replat and then do, request a rezoning of that portion of the property.
It seems to me that that might be a, a, a good compromise on this, on this issue.
Going back, you mentioned 40 acres, cultivation's only going to be two acres and a 30,000 square foot building, correct?
For cultivation, yes, that's correct.
And again, if somebody has an agricultural operation now, and they have a building, and they want to devote two acres to it, they can simply come in and seek to be rezoned.
Yep.
And there's no limit on the number of grow facilities that we can have in the county.
That's correct, yes. And I should also mention, too, with the rezoning for highway commercial, limited highway commercial, they would have to meet kind of those standards that are, are set out in code. Typically, highway commercial is along a highway. You wouldn't want a highway commercial zoning district occurring on a minimum maintenance road in the county where a residence might be okay to be on. There are a little bit of guidelines when they would come to rezon, that would need to be met, or at least brought forward to the Planning Commission and to the county board as kind of our concerns with bringing that rezoning request up.
Commissioner Mojo.
So I, we hear a lot about spot zoning. It seems like a delicate line here, based on the conversation, the argument about spot zoning, and that doesn't, it makes me a little nervous. You know, I just, for those of you that haven't been on a planning commission, I mean, those are very, you have to be careful with that in regards to making sure, one, you have a cohesive planning effort instead of special islands everywhere.
And I think along those lines, Commissioner, board wants to be cautious. You know, if the thinking is, well, let's, let's put it in, in the industrial zone category, so it's in the highway commercial, but we will sort of look to be liberal with our variances and rezoning requests, so that if the farmer in the agricultural zone wants to, to start his operation, and he's not in the highway department, you got to be careful with that, because I think along the lines of Commissioner Mojo's comments, if we're very liberal with that, but we're still stingy in some other area, with some sort of other industrial endeavor, that could cause problems for the county as well down the road. So I agree with Commissioner Mojo that there's some balance there and some delicacy when you say about rezoning and spot zoning.
Commissioner Campbell.
That's, that's what I raised last time, I thought, okay, what's the, you know, if, if this is a product that is grown from an agricultural basis, what makes it different than sugar beets? Or what makes it different than beans, or corn, or anything else that's grown? We don't put stipulations in the ag community on where they grow that stuff. But you know what, there is, and there is a defined taxing category for them that the state uses. And, and that's what I'm getting, going to, is what the state has said in terms of how it should be taxed from a real estate tax standpoint. And the real estate, and what the state is saying, it is not an agricultural product. And it's, so it should not be taxed agriculture. So, you know, so I, you know, I, at some point, we got to find some balance here. I, I certainly agree that, that from a commodity standpoint, it's, it's another ag-producing product. That's, that's legal now in the state of Minnesota to grow. So if the state were to turn around and say, well, okay, I'm going to, we should be taxing this as an agricultural component, then, then we'd have, then that would, to me, that should answer all of our questions.
Mr. Kravonoff.
So where I, well, that's a question first, but I struggle with it, is think about, where does industrial hemp fall into this? So I saw that on the list. And, you know, that's clearly not stuff you're going to smoke, you're going to make rope. And, and how does, you know, I want to be careful, if that's part of this, you know, that to me seems very ag. Or did I read that wrong? It's, it's on the list.
Yeah, Commissioner, could you point out to us where you're, exactly where you're.
I'll try to go back to it. Go ahead with your conversations, but I mean, I'm not for sure I read it somewhere. And maybe it was, maybe it was in that first ordinance when we had the meetings with the updates.
That could be, Commissioner, I, this isn't ringing a bell to me, but that.
Okay, and you haven't seen it, Erica?
I am not, I, I've never mentioned industrial hemp, so I guess I'm not for certain.
Okay, okay.
Where that would have been at, if it was in a previous rendition, or what, but.
Mr. Chair, it's on page 52 of our document in regards to the cannabis uses for manufacture. On bullet point three, it talks about manufacturing licenses. License holders can also hold additional licenses for cultivation, medical cannabis cultivation, industrial hemp cultivation, and event organizer.
Yes, so that's additional.
Yep, so that would be in the cultivation one as well.
So what, what do you say?
So that would not be affecting, that's saying you could have a cultivation license for marijuana in addition to whatever else you're doing on the industrial hemp side of your business.
In addition to, okay, thank you. Thanks for finding that.
Because right now, there's no limitation, you could grow industrial hemp on an ag parcel.
Yeah.
I believe that's true.
My understanding is the state monitors that for THC content. There's going to be some THC content in it, but they don't want it to exceed a certain level to where it would be, to keep it impractical for use, recreational use.
So if I, maybe again, we're seeing all the green as ag, and, and you, I think you had previously how many there are these other sites that would be the commercial, right?
Yes, so I have that up on the, on the map, is showing in the blue. Those would be those eight areas of the county that are zoned just limited highway commercial or just highway commercial, where the wholesale, manufacturing, and retail would be proposed. And then if you would like to limit cultivation to those as well, where they would also be proposed.
How would we ever? Well, just, here's where I'm at. I struggle with the ag part. I'm way more comfortable with this, but yet I don't. How do we have a, you're, you're bringing it up already, Jenny, you know, how do we have a, so to speak, comprehensive plan, you know, for the, the whole county? And, I don't know, maybe we don't have to go down that road. But I, I think it, in some ways, really, really limits the opportunity. And when I think about where this cultivation might take place with such a limited spots, if it may work. I, I don't know if that's right for land ownership and the values that might be associated when that area is so specific and small.
I, and, and just for context, if you can help me with this. Whether it's industrial or agricultural, there's going to be limits to make sure that these premises are secure. Nobody's, nobody's going to come onto your land and steal your sugar beets. But particularly right across the river from a place where this is totally illegal, and hence a black market. I can easily imagine some, some nefarious individuals wanting to come and take your marijuana crop. We will, no matter what we decide today on industrial or agricultural, we will have requirements for fencing, lights, security cameras. I mean, that, that is an assumption that we can make.
That is correct, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. There are standards that would be set forth within the proposed ordinance for security purposes, as well as all the other nine points and seconds that they jump forward to that. That for cultivation and operation plans, there needs to be a site plan, security, wastewater, waste disposal, utilities, water usage, recycling, solid waste, and pest management. And those are all standards that would be looked at during a conditional use permit hearing.
So in looking at this, that's going to be really tough to do on two acres. I mean, just in my estimation. I, I would like to think the market would take care of itself, and people that want to make money on this are going to do it in a part of the country where you've got a seven-month at best grow, grow season. They're going to want to do it indoors. And limiting it to industrial may not impact, really, the people that are seriously going to go into this as a business. But, I don't know, it's, it's conflicting. And the thing of growing it like a crop, like you would any other crop, is probably not a real practical way to do it, because it's going to be expensive to secure two acres in a manner that would meet zoning.
Mr. Chair, if I might, though, but is that our job to determine if something's a financially stable regulation or not? We put those limitations, for instance, I think back, solid waste here, a few years ago, we talked organic recycling at the landfill, and the contingencies that we put on that permit for organic recycling in terms of security and smell mitigation and size of fencing, they never even did it because the cost eliminated it. I mean, I, I mean, we need to talk about the parameters and trust that our departments can manage things, the limitations, the conditions, if you will, if we put on things, not if it's a financially feasible choice.
True.
Mr. Chair, can you, can you go back to the slide where Commissioner Kravonoff was asking about, where that showed the dots for, they've got one right there. What would that look like if, if, if that were to include any highway commercial corridor? It would look different than that, wouldn't it?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So, so in other words, right now, this is, this is the, just industrial, right, where it would be allowed under industrial? Is that what those green dots represent?
So those green dots represent areas of the county that are currently zoned as only highway commercial or only limited highway commercial. They have no other zoning on them.
So, so they're currently zoned highway commercial. How many other areas within the county, you know, for example, if we, as we're having the discussion about somebody bringing forward a, wanting to be rezoned to highway commercial? What, what, you know, how would that potentially look with all of the areas that would qualify under highway commercial? It would be more significant than that, wouldn't it?
Yes, there's plenty of highways across the county, so there'd be plenty of areas that if anybody wanted to come forward and do a new subdivision for highway commercial zoning, they certainly could.
I keep going back to the cannabis business tax classification. Regardless of the location of, for cultivation, manufacturing, wholesale, or retail of cannabis, the tax classification will follow the Minnesota Department of Revenue as Class 3A, 3A commercial property. And it just, it just seems to me that, that we're going to end up in conflict if we, if we have that as ag. I, I fully get that this is going to be an opportunity for some producers that others won't be able to do because, based on zoning. That happens in a lot of areas. It's not just cannabis. We restrict other things that, throughout the county, to certain areas. Highway commercial is one of them. It's a, it's a restriction that only allows to happen in certain parts of the county.
I have a follow-up.
Commissioner.
To kind of piggyback where we're going here. So you said other opportunities, defined highway. What does that mean? Does that mean a county road paved, or is that a county road? Or what, what would be, is that criteria?
I would say a paved highway. You just don't want any sort of business coming and popping up on a gravel road that is maintained even by the county, just because of the increased cost for maintaining that. And then the increased nuisances for residents in the areas from the amount of dust that would be created by the traffic in those areas, so.
Just wanted to be clear what that opportunity lies.
Mr. Chair, you had, you had mentioned, you know, issues and, and when it comes to certain requirements of protecting the area from, you know, and I, I don't want to throw the sheriff into this fray, but I'm, I'm just curious if he has, you know, if, if you're understanding this discussion versus industrial versus commercial, and, and what your thoughts on, if you have any, on it from a, from a public safety standpoint.
Yeah, Sheriff.
Yeah, thank you, I've been following this, I've been part of the discussions prior as well. And definitely my take on it would be more industrial. We have found illegal grow operations in the county. Last one I can remember, August 24th of '21, we had one on 90th Avenue North, right at the Buffalo River there, where we took an illegal grow operation from. So I would like to see this as far as, it may be industrial, not maybe for sure industrial, as it would probably be easier for us as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
And, and if I can, so, so in addition to, and again, we're, we're in the first design of, of this product is now being a legal product, and we're trying to institute some regulation on it. And because we adopt an ordinance today, we don't all have the wisdom of Solomon to know what the future is, you know, and, you know, so we, so there is the ability for a board to review these types of ordinance and to make a change, for example, from industrial, commercial. If we're going to, if we happen to have all the producers in Clay County beating down our door saying, we want to, we think you made a mistake, then we have the ability to deal with that, right? I, I mean, we have the ability to make those changes. But I, you know, I think you need to start somewhere. And I think the, starting somewhere would be to be looking at what, how the state classifies it. And incorporate that into your, into your zoning. That's my take.
Go ahead and proceed, I think we, we probably pulled you off track, but.
And then I was just also going to show that, this is an example of an indoor facility that's up in Menomon, just so you can get the kind of size and scale of what those indoor facilities kind of look like. And then if you wanted to see the, up close, the maps of those highway commercial, limited highway commercial, again, from the different locations across the county. That top left one, I should also note, it's, there's only one parcel in that highway commercial area in the green that is allowed as it had urban expansion district removed from it quite a few years back. And then here's the other half of those highway commercial zoning districts across the county. And then I'll just jump forward to kind of the, the board options. So either you can move forward as it is currently written with that cultivation being allowed in more zoning districts, or if you wish to amend it and take a more conservative approach by limiting those locations for cultivation, the staff would just recommend the following change of removing that portion in, in part A and including that cultivation in that second part to limit it to highway commercial and limited highway commercial. Staff's recommendation is to maybe be a little bit more conservative in the approach as the rules are still being kind of drawn out and worked at the state level. We are in the midst of doing a development code update that's slated to be looked at in November. So that might be a perfect time to touch base on this again, if, if you would like to, and review kind of if there's changes needed at that point. You could, certainly can do that. Like you had pointed out, Commissioner Campbell, this is just a, a first run at it. It can certainly always be amended in the future.
So to be clear, so what you're, so the B is the. So, to be clear, so what you're, so the B is the one that the planning commission has recommended?
No, the planning commission was kind of 50-50 split. They had just moved forward on recommending the current as it is written to the county board.
Okay, so as it's written is A?
As it's written would be just the first on the move to enact ordinance 2024-2 as drafted. That would be the portion that was in your packet. A and B are as written.
The motion with the deletions and eliminating A and B, but simply limiting development code to the cultivation, manufacturing, wholesale, and sale of cannabis and cannabis-related products shall be permitted as a conditional use in highway commercial and limited highway commercial zoning districts with the deletion of the other description, describers. That's the staff recommendation.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Kravenoff?
Well, I'm clear on terminal, or verbiage. So, is industrial synonymous with these commercial? I mean, I've been hearing commercial, which I feel I understand, but in my head, thinking of planning in town, we have industrial areas, we have commercial areas. How does that work with this?
Yeah, so Commissioner Paul, we do not have an industrial zoning district in the county. More of our higher intensity uses are just located within the highway commercial or limited highway commercial zoning districts.
All right, thank you for that. All right.
Any other questions? Any further presentation from any of you guys? Can I see this as? I would entertain a motion from either perspective, the original drafted ordinance 2024-2, or a motion to accept the staff recommendation limiting this to highway, or conditional use of highway commercial and limited highway commercial zoning districts.
Well, I'm comfortable with making a motion to start us.
Okay.
I recommend the motion as staff is suggested and as written under board options. So, in, you want, it's been read already, but in Table 5, so that this becomes conditional use of highway commercial and limited highway commercial zoning districts.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, just with a clarification. So, we are enacting ordinance 2024-2, including the description in Table 5, that's staff recommended. That's, is that how we're dealing with the motion?
Is that correct, Commissioner Kravenoff?
So, we're dealing with the whole ordinance, including?
Yes, 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 that is correct.
And with staff recommendation on this section.
Right.
Okay, we have motion, a second, discussion. I think this does correspond both with the staff recommendations and what we've heard from the sheriff this morning. And as has been stated a couple of times, this is a moving target, and I will be thoroughly amazed if we're not back here as decisions are made in St. Paul to where we're not going to have to do some adjusting. But as it stands now, I'm comfortable with this. And I would, this is a good time for discussion. I'm sure we'll be back at the table here talking about it in the future. Anybody who has concerns about it, I'd like to hear them because I'm not locked into We don't have any further discussion. We'll move to a vote.
Mr. Chair, can I request a roll call?
Sure.
Commissioner Mojo?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Motion passes to go with the staff recommendation on ordinance 2024-2. And the motion is, the ordinance has been passed. Thank you, guys, for coming. It's a lot of work, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Next up, we have County Administrator Steve Larson regarding request approval for department position requests to be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. As we continue to work on our board, the work at Clay County, we've seen an increased amount of time that has been put in to these board meetings, oftentimes in the last year, going to 11:00, 11:30, 12:00 o'clock. And with certainly a goal of full transparency to the citizens, one of the issues that we've have been discussed and discussed in the past is the possibility of placing previously approved positions in the, in department budgets on a consent agenda rather than bringing them here to the board each time there is an opening. And so, the request before the commission for discussion, it would be for when there are openings that have been fully approved, whether that's through the budget process, whether they're new positions through the budget process and/or through a retirement or resignation, that the items be placed on consent, again, with the opportunity that they can always be pulled if the board has any questions. And then also, temporary promotions not to exceed 12 months would also be put on consent if they're budget neutral and/or necessary for the efficient operation of the department. With that, I yield for any questions.
Mr. Chair, I oppose this. And I've done it before because this has been also brought up before. And I know that it takes time away from these people that may be in supervisor roles who have to come before the board and request, even though it's been a budgeted item. Just like today, I asked a question of one of our supervisors being a highway as to why the, you know, why the person, that helps us. And I think it keeps us involved. And it, you know, in terms of, you used the word transparency. Hiding something under the consent agenda, to me, isn't all that transparent. And, you know, I just, you know, for the little bit of time that they may need to walk over and explain why that they have an opening, it allows us to maybe dig a little deeper and find out why. You know, in this particular case, this person left because they got more money somewhere We wouldn't have known that if we don't start asking those types of questions. So, that's my opinion on it. I don't think it's, and besides that, it's good to see our supervisors come here and have some discussion with them. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yeah, and I certainly see both sides, but to, when I was, this was kind of brought up in the beginning, my biggest thing I'll say as a newer commissioner, it's been when our staff comes in front of us that I get a feel, that's how I get to know these people. That's how our relationships begin. The one that really jumps forward for me is James. You know, just some of the things I've learned about what's going on over in Juve. I don't know that I would have really known the depth of what they do without having them come here, because I'm not part of the committees. So, how else do I find out? Or, no, so, and I understand it is maybe not the most efficient, but I think for a deeper understanding for those that aren't on public safety or in certain other committees, to me, it's how we become to know not only these people as directors, but again, deeper backgrounds for the questions that are asked.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I would just like to hear maybe the conversation that happened at the pick committee, to hear what was brought up, knew that the reason for bringing this forward again. I think we, was it, we talked about this within the year. So, I just want to hear if there's any additional components in that discussion that required it to come back.
I would just feel that our supervisors have already taken into consideration that they want to hire back. And I don't know if we ever turned down a request from our supervisors. You know, so, I agree, it's nice to have them here and talk to them about it, but we've got to put some confidence in our supervisors that they still need that position. And I guess I've always been concerned, it's on the budget, let's hire back. But we've never denied it, a request. So, I just hope that the supervisors are doing their work ahead of time, that they decided they need this position back. If we don't trust in our supervisors, I don't approve the budget.
My perspective on it was from the position of being a department director. You want to be prepared when you go before the commission or the board. But it takes time. And a lot of, and the time that we see, particularly with department directors that they spend in here, I mean, it can be fairly substantial on things that they need to present to us that are new. But on routine business, as long as it's on the consent agenda, you read the agenda, you go, this is the third time that we've seen an open position in this department. Why don't we have the department director come in and tell us what's going on? That's a reasonable adjustment we can make. But I see an awful lot of time being spent here and out in the hall with folks that have got a lot of work to get done on their own time. And this seemed to make, seemed to be a reasonable option because we're not saying, no, we'll never discuss it. If we've got concerns, we can pull it off the agenda and have that discussion.
So, from my perspective, I appreciate that, the points. I think it really helps kind of those of us that aren't on the pick committee understand what the discussion was. From my perspective, I recall a few years ago where Kathy McKay had to come over and over and over because we were having such a trouble with hiring nurses. And out of that stemmed our realization that we needed to have a wage study. And that was really the board's realization that there was some pay concerns in regards to how, what the markets were saying and what Clay County was offering. And so, those were the type of realizations that came to us, that it was like, okay, we really do need to, excuse me, do something to address this issue. And I thoroughly understand coming to a board when you have an agenda item at 8:30 and you don't get to it till 9:40. So, I think from a board meeting management, maybe we should do better about that. However, I agree, I'm not in favor of this for a couple of reasons, but in order to maybe mitigate what we're hearing from staff, I would propose that we have new hires at the very beginning. And those are typically new hire conversations that don't take more than three or four minutes, if even that. It allows the board to understand maybe where department heads are coming and address that and be sensitive to their time. But where I think it's really important to have them come is that it does allow us the opportunity to have a decorum with them, to have conversations with them. For instance, I was one of those people that didn't realize a road had over a foot of water on it yesterday when I drove through it. And that allowed our county engineer today to let the public know to proceed with caution because there are other issues. I think there's a middle here in regards to it. They currently don't come to us when they're replacing something in the probation period, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. And so, I think there's that. But also, on the other side is if you have a department head, for instance, that has someone who's retiring or even someone that's leaving, that we know because we've built a relationship with them, I want the ability to say, best of luck in your retirement, or best of luck as you go forward, to show our appreciation to these departments. So, with that, I think my recommendation to staff as we get requests is I want department heads to know that we hear their concerns, that we value their time. But we also want to see them because it is an opportunity to work with them. So, if we could maybe have those items at the beginning of the agenda, and not that we love doing it, there is an opportunity for folks to tune in virtually. So, if there is a meeting that they have a hard deadline on, let's communicate that to the board chair so that the board chair knows someone has to be out of here by 15 minutes after the meeting starts, and we can make sure and get to them.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo. That's good insight, and it's probably a good way to maybe to try to look at this. I don't oppose this because I want to micromanage our supervisors. That's not what I want to do. I just, I want to be able to be able to interact and understand what's going on. And all of us up here have a fiduciary responsibility to the public, and we also have to understand when problems may occur. And we all might have our own way of having red flags raised in terms of, okay, what do we need to improve a situation that, that a lot of these requests for new hires might, there might be some reasoning behind it that we need to deal with as a board. And so, for those reasons, and like Commissioner Kravenoff said, I've been on this board now for 22 years, and I still enjoy seeing our supervisors coming in and sitting here, and I still learn from them. I still learn from them. And, you know, and if they, you know, and if they can't sit right there, you know, just like she said, and that we're in this new technology phase, if it works, that we can have them be at their desk and visit with us. So, anyway, that's, that's my thought.
I suppose we can do this one of two ways, and we can, somebody can make a motion, or Steve, would this be something you'd just be able to incorporate into your weekly preparation in the pack?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think that we certainly, we're here as policy, to implement the policies of the board, and so, our wish is we'll comply with what your needs are and demands are. I think the challenge that we run into sometimes is when we have special guests that come, whether it's legislators, Derek Lapointe, other presentations, they're oftentimes putting in requests to come in as early as possible so they can move on. But we certainly can try this process.
Just to get it out of the discussion part, I'll make a motion that these be placed on the consent agenda. New hires are placed on consent agenda.
Well, for discussion, I'll go ahead and second it. If you want to discuss this, Commissioner Gross, we'll proceed on that.
I think we've discussed it long enough, I guess, already.
Okay.
If anyone else wants to say anything, fine, let's either vote on it or not.
All right. All in favor of the motion that these be, that new hires be placed on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Commissioner Kravenoff, you're up.
Well, I wasn't able to make last Tuesday's meeting, so I'm going to go back with a couple meetings that were the week before. So, on May 21st, I had the Adult Mental Health LAC meeting, our monthly meeting. If you remember that, preceding that meeting, which this occurred in the afternoon, that same group gave a presentation to our board. I just wanted to express their thanks for the interaction of the board with them, and they just really appreciated that things that were said were very well received. And we had a little more conversation mainly about our main points and as we go forward making new agendas about. making new agendas about the year, how, you know, will we keep focused on those main points that were brought forward that the LEC promotes and supports. And then also, that night then, I went to the county planning meeting. Again, this was at the very beginning of our creating of the cannabis ordinance. So I wanted, I went to that meeting just to hear what the county committee, what they were going to consider, and as was stated by Erica just a few minutes ago, it was pretty much a split vote, but just different ways of going forward. Then the next morning, I did have an update meeting along with Public Health, our assistant, Mike Lesser, and then we had a cannabis ordinance update that was led by Jason McCoy and Mike, again bringing us up to date on the ordinance, and again reacted to that on that today. So some of the things were in the early making. That afternoon, I was over for the, over at the, I'm sorry, the law enforcement center to be part of a module number three that was given by our emergency services, and I took in that training, if you will, that was presented by Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Certainly came away from that learning pretty quickly. We have potential language barriers in this city in particular, and being in something has to be fast, fast-moving, what's our best approaches to make sure we're getting to our communities of especially new Americans that have been in here that don't probably speak English well yet, and yet getting information out quickly that of something of this great emergency to their specific area. So it was, it was good, I enjoyed the module, and I took in what I, I thought there was good updates brought forward, that I, things I hadn't thought about much before. Then also, on the, on Friday, I forgot the date, anyway, I think it's the 31st, the creative community, or creating community consulting put together, gather a meeting. It was people having to do with the Ramke Park area and the possibility of what might be coming of that area town, the development toward a family resource center, which I know has been talked about quite a bit, and getting updates. There were about 30 people in attendance, half of those were probably employees of our social services, of kind of all different departments, or areas, I'm sorry, that have to do with social services, and then we also had public health there. Anyway, just want you to know, as that's gone along, they, a lot of their funding comes through the Sawyer Family Foundation, and this group receives another grant, an extension that takes the work out to November. And then if a plan is something that can be executed to help the development and moving forward of looking of resources going out in the community, there may be another grant that they can get to work toward implementation. From the original plan, and again, I wasn't here at that time, so this would be going back a couple of years when that first, some of the first part of those projects were being talked about and what this might be. Well, certainly it's downscaled quite a bit. And at this point, Jasmine, the daycare center, is working with the city of Morehead, the land grant went to Morehead, Morehead got the land to them, they can proceed, their project is going to be quite a bit smaller than first was thought. And as far as bricks and mortar for a resource center, I think for now that's pretty well on hold, and the thought is, and this is happening elsewhere in the state, what will something look like in mobile resources, if you will? So there's a core group being developed. I'm not going to be part of that group, I'll be part of the bigger group to listen and give information as we move along, but, so what our time was spent doing was identifying the partners in town to carry resources to areas, and it's not all about Ramke, it's just a, there's kind of a hole there without a public place to really have people get at, or, I'm sorry, to gather and receive new information. But we'll see where it goes. I think there'll be another meeting in the next few months, and we'll just see what happens. But I thought what they, when they talk about this mobile access, I think that's smart, you know, and it's more efficient. And if they can find places that maybe it works at a church, or maybe some NMSUM, or Concordi, or something like that, we can have our social people be part of that, right? And deliver services in a pointed place that helps those people, because like so many things we have, unfortunately, and it's kind of amazing how often it comes up, it's transportation. And people just can't get where, how does a single mother with three kids make all appointments without adequate, you know, transportation to get there? So, then they're skipping their appointments, and that's not good either. So, anyway, just wanted to report on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. My only meeting was the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting yesterday. We discussed an increase to the intern hours for the summer. Really, we were able to get a lot of work done at a lesser amount, so the board was in favor of that. And then we did approve sending a letter, an office, or offer letter to a new office manager, executive assistant, as Savannah Leach has moved on to another position. That's all my reports.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. On May 28th, we had a public safety committee meeting, and it was to discuss just the items that we acted on today regarding the requests for funding for raises for new hires, or incentive higher pay. Then yesterday, we had a Red River Regional Dispatch special meeting, and the purpose of that was to go over the bids and to make a recommendation to the Cass County Board to approve the bids for the general contractor for the new building, and that was Ledstone Inc. in the amount of $5,492,000. Robert Gibb was the low bidder on the mechanical for $2,214,385, and that included a secondary bid option for a, for $20,496, which was a video screen that's used in the dispatch area where they can either have one great big deal, or they want to be viewing something as it's happening, or it can be split into multiple screens. And it was highly recommended, and with today's technology, I think it, it's very been, I think, we thought it was very beneficial for those dispatchers to be able to have that screened to view. This is, so as a side note, on those three contracts, the amount added up to $10,172,000, which equates just in those three areas of about $678 a square foot. The total bid price of the project is still $15,711,000, which is $1,047.40 a square foot. At one point in time, I think I remember somebody saying, this won't cost a nickel over $400 a square foot. And at that time, I thought, hmm. Anyway, that's, and so we did, we as a board did agree to send that forward to Cass County. And of course, there still is the issue, the difference between that $12 million, that was the original amount, and the $15 million, there still is that amount that has to be worked out between Fargo, West Fargo, and Cass County on how they're going to come up with those additional dollars. So, and Commissioner Abinger chairs that committee, and he may have some additional information on that. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Gross?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Dilworth City Council meeting, and most of the discussion was done on road construction that they plan on doing in the city of Dilworth. Also planning on that, I don't know if you're acquainted with Dilworth or not, Third Avenue North, a lot of discussion on redoing that road, which is going to happen probably in another year or so. Talked about sidewalks and stuff like that too, that they plan on doing. Tuesday, we also had the PRTF.
PRTF.
That we had, that we discussed there, are looking at different ideas, whether it's going to be done on campus, or coming up with a new bill or not, but no definite decisions have been made on it yet, but there'll be a further meeting coming up in another week or so. I think we got another meeting next week to discuss it some more. Had a meeting with a resident, very concerned about abortion. Told him we'd have further discussion on whether we're even going to be involved, or the county can be involved, and something like that, but it's just a matter of, something that I'll be looking into, talking, in the future, we'll be talking about that. Went to breakfast on the farm, which I don't know, it wasn't a meeting or anything like that, but it was a good meal again, so, thousands of people out there. It's amazing how they can bring all those people out there. It's a good county function. Last night, I went to Georgetown City to discuss things. Georgetown City, I talked to them a little bit about the diversion plans, about raising Highway 75, and they're aware of it, and it's already going on in Pearlie, Hendrum, and Halls that have already done it, so they pretty much know what's going to happen there, and I'm looking forward to it. Those are my meetings.
Thank you. Last, last Tuesday, I attended a public safety fund meeting that Commissioner Campbell's already covered. And Friday, the 31st, I met with Amanda Glassco, the executive director of Triple RDC, Chad Borman with SEH Architect, Robert Wilson, and Eric Johnson. Robert's the Cass County Administrator, and Eric is the council for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. We looked at the bids and the financing of the project. There's still no specifics from our North Dakota partners on the, on how we're going to approach the difference from the bids and what was originally budgeted, but that is a work in progress. They seem comfortable they're going to be able to take care of that. But we did need to kind of light a fire under getting the bids in front of Cass County, and they wanted us to have a vote from the Triple RDC Board of Authority on just, we can't approve the bids, but they wanted our recommendation on the bids so that Cass County could approve it and they could start working on contracts. And our timeline to get back with the contract to the bidders, time was running out, so I agreed to get an emergency meeting called. We called one, and we got a quorum yesterday, and Commissioner Campbell's described the work that was done there. We ended up voting for the three contractors who were going to do the work, and we addressed two alternative votes. We passed on the curb and gutter issue, we were going to pull that back as a cut, but it was determined we needed that. And then the video wall, we did pass that simply because it is an additional expense, but we're looking at next generation 911, and it is not going to be too many years for dispatch centers receiving video, FaceTime, all kinds of things on people that are calling in, and we need this, we need a current generation video resources for the dispatch center. We did vote and pass a recommendation on all the bids. It went to Cass County last night. I am not aware of the final vote. I made a couple of calls this morning, but nobody was in their office. The Cass County members that were there were for this, and I think it's probably going to be a work in progress. Contracts are going to be developed, but one of the things we included in our recommendation is that they continue to look for efficiencies in this and make adjustments to the budget as we can. So I will make an effort to get ahold of somebody now, and I'll be a report back on that next chance we get on whether it passed with Cass County. And that completes my report. Steve, have you got anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just note, based on the action that the committee took, I did receive an invoice and a request from Robert Wilson for the funding that this board approved last June, and subsequently also addressed in the JPAs. And so that's in the, in the process of being, I guess, prepared for payment. Last Tuesday, participated in the public safety committee, that's been addressed. Also, the PRTF meeting, again, will be meeting next Monday, again, getting another update on a possible layout of the facility. On the 29th, participated in mediation process with Mr. Leaser in regards to the oil spill that happened in Comstock back in 2023. We were able to come to a settlement for that process. On the 29th, I did meet with Ezra Baer, he's a candidate, a potential candidate in District Two, wanted to find more out about the work that you guys all do. And just a few different items, AMC Task Force, I believe you all received an email yesterday, they're setting up a task force for long-term, sustainable, affordable housing. They're allowing for one greater Minnesota spot, if that's something of interest to any of you, to apply by June 10th. Just of note, we have on our website, you'll see it out at the Morehead Center Mall, there is now only one entrance into that with the construction that's happening, it's on the northwest corner, and so our citizens, in order to access, will have to come up in that area. I would note, just been having some correspondence with the, with the capital budget coordinator from Minnesota Management and Budget, we've talked about the standpoint of getting on the capital, their capital planning, bonding for a potential PRTF. The challenge that we have is they only take new requests on odd years, and so subsequently, we wouldn't be able to put in for any bonding dollars until a year from now, and so. So that's what we found there, just a few different things happening, a busy week for you all. Again, we have a district meeting on Friday in Fergus Falls from 8 to noon. We have the fourth and final HSEM training, 1 to 3:30 on Wednesday. Also, the groundbreaking for the, for the new library is also that day at 3 o'clock. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything for us, Ms. Milton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have something. I asked Ms. Hurlock, Caitlin Hurlock is in my office, she's one of my assistant county attorneys, I asked her to come up today. She was named the Drug Prosecutor of the Year for the state of Minnesota. She got her award at Can-Am, and so I think it's a very good news story, you know, she both helps or does administer the drug court that we have for our office, as well as with the judge and everything, so the graduates that go through there, and I know the board has been very supportive of seeing that. But she's also, when you look at, and that's one piece of everything we do, the other piece is public safety and working to make sure that drugs are off the street, are taken off the street. And I think, really, the award is to her, but it really is about the work that drug prosecutors for Morehead, for Clay County do. And so with some of the work that she did, I just thought I would highlight some of the things that over the last year, back June 2023, law enforcement intercepted a package. I think we know, I mean, the scourge that we have with methamphetamine and the addiction that it caused, it's a severe, very addictive drug that we have. And then what we're seeing now is fentanyl being added into that drug, which is doubling the addictive qualities of that and really producing both addiction, but a lot of drug overdose, and several drug overdose deaths that we're seeing across the state. So we know it's something that's important to get off the street. I think we also know that, you know, our county, being on a border community, we see levels of drugs, and I think that's one thing to see when, when Caitlin, the work she's done, it's not a small community type thing. This is the kind of levels that you see in bigger cities. And typically, the prosecutor of the year, drug prosecutor of the year, is somebody in Minneapolis, Hennepin or Ramsey. But when you look at some of these, one case, the law enforcement intercepted a package of 1,900 fentanyl pills and three pounds of methamphetamine. That investigation led to prosecution of four individuals. One of those individuals pled guilty and is serving 102 months in prison. One of the others is serving a 56-month sentence in prison, and two others are awaiting trial. In August of 2023, law enforcement did a multiple controlled buy case that resulted with 190 pills being sold to undercover police officers that led to further law enforcement doing search warrants and getting 1,328 fentanyl pills. There were young children that were in that house, and those, those two individuals were found guilty of first degree drug sales, as well as child endangerment, and received 130 months in prison. In December of 2023, law enforcement was tracking a vehicle. Ultimately, the four individuals that were stopped had 1,000 fentanyl pills within the vehicle, and additional information work led to another 2,600 fentanyl pills found within that vehicle as it was searched. And those individuals have now all been prosecuted with sentences of 95 months to 78 months for those individuals. And then in March of 2024, Clay County Sheriff's Department deputies were in a pursuit with a vehicle that refused to pull over. That vehicle's eventually stopped, had 400 fentanyl pills in it. That prosecution led to a sentence of an individual going to prison for 85 months. And there's, so we have 39 other first degree drug cases pending out there. It just tells you that, that the, the work is continuing, and it's a, there, I constantly say, there's the master degree level where we need to figure out the people that need assistance and need help and need to get off drugs and get away from that addictive piece, and drug court serves a great piece and service. There's a lot of other people that just need to be removed from the community and be away for public safety purposes as long as, as possible. And that's the work that Caitlin and, and the other drug detectives have done here. So I just thought it was good to highlight her. They did give her a really nice plaque, too. So if you get a chance, it's a, they do a good job. So Can-Am does that. So I just wanted to thank her and ask her to come up here. So thanks for giving me a second.
I'm going to jump in on this. Never been a narc, but I was a detective for about 20 years of my career. And if you don't have prosecutors that got your back, you can spend a lot of time spinning your wheels for no product. And it sounds like you're a fire prosecutor, and that is just what this community needs because we get people getting poisoned, lives being ruined. And every one of those pills that's taken off is, is one more opportunity to maybe intervene. And our drug court here does good work and helps people get their lives back. So thank you. You deserve the plaque, you deserve a lot more than that. But also, deep down inside, I know you're having fun. It's good to send people away when you know leaving them in the community is going to harm the community. So that's, that's good work. And congratulations on the recognition you earned. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Congratulations. Caitlin, I, you know, thank you for the work that you do in protecting our community. Again, we talked about law enforcement earlier today, that we need to back them. Thank, thanks to them for helping get these drugs off the street, you know? And I listened to our county attorney talk about, if we were to add up all those fentanyl pills, and you think about each one of those, just one of those, in the wrong hands and used the wrong way, could be a death in our community. One little fentanyl pill, you know, used the wrong way by a child, or so, so these are really important issues in keeping our community safe. And I just, boy, it's, it's really nice to hear that we got somebody in Clay County who got, got the state award. Nice, nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't give one at Can-Am. I got off the stage as fast as possible. But I will just say that, I mean, the detectives here locally nominated me, and when I was first hired in Clay County, I was hired specifically to do CHIPS, child protection and juvenile work. And then through just caseload shifts on a random Friday in July of '22, I was told I was going to be doing not only adult criminal for the first time, but first and second degree drug cases. And you can ask Mr. Milton or Ms. Foss, I was resistant at first because I wasn't sure that I'd be able to do, do the cases justice. But the detectives that I work with, because I work with them the most, when the cases come to you wrapped up in a bow, basically, it does make my job a lot easier. But I just try to put in the same amount of effort that they do, because if they're out on the streets every day, you know, working undercover and dealing with confidential informants and arresting these people, and I don't put in the same effort, it seems like a slap in the face to them. I was raised by a federal law enforcement officer, so I grew up in a law enforcement family, so I just, I come in here and I don't know, I don't feel I do anything above and beyond, I feel like I do what the job requires, but I just try to make sure that I put in the same effort that they do and hold people accountable when they need to be and get people the services they need when they need those services more than, than prison.
Not only a good job, well motivated, so.
I've attended a few of your sessions, and you do where you go on. Do a good job, you deserve the award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just give her a round. Thanks so much. Sarah, could you top that? Nothing for us? Okay. We're adjourned.